...by the Chinese government. So I'm not sure you ever get to the point in which you're having a level playing field at which A business is talking to A business, a US business is talking to a Chinese business, or the US government is talking to a Chinese manufacturer. The conversation would always involve the Chinese government, which controls the economy. Does that make sense, Zach or somebody?
Yeah. I seem to remember in the news, ZTE and Huawei or something, a cellphone maker?
Yeah.
But you're right, your point, they did have to negotiate with the Chinese government. But that was a pretty severe tool that we had to use to say, hey, you can't sell these phones in Best Buy, because they're looking to expand. They want to take out Apple, right? And America's a very important market, because everyone has a cellphone, right? So I think that maybe is an example where that's happening.
Other trade questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
Why don't we deal with Cuba?
The question was, why don't we deal with Cuba? I don't know whether there's a difference of opinion in the audience, but I'm on the side, if you're suggesting we should, I'm in full agreement with that. And sanctions, let me say it differently, embargoes. We've embargoed products from Cuba to come to the United States, and we prevented our products going there. Those embargoes don't work well generally, but they don't work well at all when we're the only country who does that embargo. So it is a unilateral embargo. That means the United States is the only one that has these rules. And so when we don't sell wheat to Cuba, for example, Canada does, France does. And so we're not changing, in my view, we're not changing the behavior of the Cuban government, but we're not benefiting their people when we exclude them from our ability to sell and to buy. And I've been an advocate for that kind of relationship, particularly when it's, in fact, an amendment that I offered ultimately became law in a slightly different form, back when I was your House member, not your senator. And the law was changed and said that we could sell agriculture commodities, food and medicine, to Cuba. That was the first break we'd had in that embargo in forty-some years. It was working for a while, and Cuba was buying from us agriculture. We had a number of Kansas farm organizations that went to Cuba to establish a relationship. We had Cubans who came to the United States to visit farms in Kansas and processing plants. The Bush administration changed the rules and made it much more difficult for that to occur, mostly related to, and I've been on the side that we don't, we shouldn't, my general belief is this, that we shouldn't subsidize those sales. But if Cuba has the ability to pay, then we ought to take their money and sell them the product. The Bush administration changed the rules that then prohibited any US bank from lending any money to allow Cuba to buy from here, and changed the point in which the money had to be paid, from when the ship landed in Havana to when the ship left the United States. And because of both of those issues, no ability to get a letter of credit, and the requirement that you pay upfront before it leaves the United States, rather than a few days later when it arrives in Cuba, meant that we no longer were competitive with other countries who were willing. Our ninety-mile distance no longer mattered so much, because the access to credit and the amount of credit, the length of time the credit was necessary changed. And those rules could be changed again by a White House. President Obama went down this path a bit, and we just haven't realized the potential. This is not a huge issue for us in Kansas, but I got interested in this topic when, I mean, it seems like farmers are always having difficult times, but at a time in which farmers were especially at difficult times. We need more markets, not less. And Cuba is one that adds to consumption in what we produce. So I'm all for that. It's controversial, because generally, the members of Congress who represent Florida and some of the other, and it also is a problem for presidential candidates, because every president, yes, to get elected today, has to carry Florida. So you've got to go down and campaign in the Cuban-American community. And the belief for a long time, and perhaps the reality, was that those who fled Castro and communism in Cuba wanted the United States to have nothing to do with Cuba and Castro. Everything I know and read about this topic is, it's changed, it's a generational thing. And a new generation of Cubans would see that as not something they oppose. So the politics may change over time, but presidential candidates and members of Congress who come from Florida, other places in the country that have Cuban-American communities are very reluctant to allow much of this to occur. My view is, and I started an interest in Cuba, and this perhaps goes back to what the experts here today, I got interested in this, trying to find markets for Kansas farmers, but it also became clear to me that, in my view, we can create greater freedom and liberty for Cubans by having a relationship, but not, in part, in my view, the Soviet Union fell, the Berlin Wall came down, as a result, not just of our government-to-government issues, but the desire of Russians, for example, or the potential desire of Cubans to have a pair of Levi jeans and to eat McDonald's hamburgers. Those economic things that change the standard of living, that in my view, if you can increase the standard of living of a better life for Cubans in a financial sense, they then make demands upon their government for freedom and liberty and the press and religion and ability to speak your mind situation. Hello, Gordon.
Hello.
Makes me nervous when you carry a stick. Other trade?
Sure. Senator Bryan, thank you for being here. Does the US Treasury Department have the tools and needs to enforce these tariffs?
Our next, I've been, I serve on the Banking Committee, excuse me for stuttering here, trying to put my thoughts in order. I serve on the Banking Committee, which sounds like maybe that has nothing to do with this topic, but it's the Treasury Department, the Banking Committee has jurisdiction on the Treasury Department. And so our responsibility is to help or encourage, discourage behavior of the Treasury Department by what the law says. And I think the Treasury Department would say they have the ability to do this. I don't know that we've ever been in this circumstance in recent times, in which the tariffs are so pervasive, so much, so much dollars and so many commodities covered. My, if I was answering the question, I would say, I don't know whether we do or we don't. But the Banking Committee would have those opportunities, and then the tariffs that are imposed on security, for national security reasons, or so-called national security reasons. The Commerce Department, we're having, and again, I said I had Lighthizer in front of my subcommittee, my appropriations subcommittee that funds them, we're having all the folks at Commerce Department in front of our committee in the next few weeks to ask those kind of questions. What is Commerce doing? What tools do you need? What don't you have? But it also will be an opportunity for members of the committee to express their views in regard to tariffs in general. Yes, sir?
Jason Meeks, the line of your.
Hello, Jason.
So I have two questions. The first one is, with regards to tariffs that the President has placed on Canada, the US and Canada have had soldiers that fought side by side in various wars. You might all agree, always seem to have a good relationship with Canada. This seems a bit puzzling to me, why we find ourselves in a trade war with our northern neighbor. What are your thoughts on that? And then my second question is, do you support re-imposing tariffs on Iran, sanctions on Iran, following Trump's leaving Iran?
I think puzzling is an adequate word to describe the circumstances that we find ourselves in, in regard, particularly to Canada. Canadians have died alongside American soldiers, NATO soldiers in Afghanistan. I'm old enough to remember the, speaking of Iran, the capture, the attainment of our Americans in Tehran. Many of them had hid, excuse me, in the Canadian Embassy and were then smuggled out. And just, Canada has been our ally, is our ally. And I can't imagine that when these tariffs were made permissible by Congress, by law, for national security purposes, this was, I can't imagine to be the circumstance in which that grant of legislative authority was made. And that's when we get to this question, I have this story I mentioned earlier about Section 232, those are tariffs that can be imposed for national security. Congress has made a less-than-adequate attempt to take that authority back and to give Congress a decision-making opportunity in the decisions whether to impose those kind of tariffs against our allies. And it also, I guess, fits with what I was saying earlier, we ought to get along with somebody in the world right now, so we can focus on China and their behavior. In regard to Iran, I opposed the agreement that was negotiated by President Obama and Congress. In my view, it was a sad day in which we couldn't take a vote, the closest we had to vote, to vote on whether or not we agreed with the agreement between the United States and other countries in Iran, was whether or not to consider the issue, and the vote was not to consider it. So Congress has had, the Senate has had no input into what you would have thought initially was going to be a treaty. Because, I assume this, I don't know this to be true, but my guess is, the Obama administration, not wanting to subject this agreement to a two-thirds vote of approval in the Senate, didn't present it as a treaty. It's an executive agreement between our government and theirs. The downside to President Obama's policy position is that means the next president, since it's not a ratified treaty, can make changes. I think it is, it is a desired goal to keep Iran from becoming nuclear. But Iran does so many other things in the world, that in my view, that agreement was not enough encompassing. So we gave them money and benefits for a part of the deal. And so having opposed the agreement, it would be hypocritical for me to suggest that we ought not get out of it. So I'm on that side. But the challenge is, sanctions, again, going back to Cuba, only work whenever you have the leverage to make them work. And we had, at that point in time, prior to President Obama's decision to terminate those sanctions, we had China, Russia, European community, all on the same page. And we will never, in today's circumstances, ever get Russia, China, and the European community back on the same page when it comes to re-imposing sanctions against Iran. So they will be, I think, much less effective, although I've been reading that Tehran, Tehran is having struggles, and I don't know the facts about this yet. Incidentally, for the slide of your point of view, those tariffs that we placed on Canada include paper, paper pulp, and the cost of newsprint is now increasing. That was done because we only have, we have one company in the United States that makes the kind of paper that's necessary. And every other paper company is opposed to those tariffs, but we're now imposing tariffs on paper products coming from Canada, which then has a consequence on, and I don't mean this in any pejorative way, I actually mean in a positive way, in newspapers that are already struggling to stay in business, we have now one more increasing cost associated with putting a newspaper to print. Roy, you look serious, but you always look serious.
Yeah.
That's a serious, before I give you that opportunity, let me see if we're done with trade and anything that you all want to talk, maybe to these folks here.
You had mentioned about, you know, Congress paying back, and why would it be different now, you know, than in the past? Why didn't they take back when we had a weak administration negotiating on that? Why did Congress step up that way?
Well, I'm a critic of Congress. You raise a point, in my view, the framers, the Constitution created the executive branch to be, the brakes on any administration, on the executive branch, as too often, Congress has looked the other way, has delegated. We pass big pieces of legislation and tell the agencies and departments, you write the rules and regulations. So I was critical of the Obama administration, for example, in all the executive orders and the rules and regulations. But I also try to be equally critical of Congress, who allowed that to happen by our decisions either to grant that authority by law or just to do nothing. And so I'm hopeful that at some point in time, and I always see a little bit of evidence about it, that it's happening, that you actually have a Congress that does its job. It's one reason I'm actually pleased we're working, we're staying in Washington DC. This is the only week of an August recess we're now taking, that's a good thing, Congress ought to be doing. I don't want Congress to do more, in the sense of more laws and more stuff, but I want us to do the things that the Constitution gave us to do, and we're, you know, I'm a bit on, like, it's a bit related to Iran. I think over time, now I'm moving out of the trade world, but over time, I've come to the conclusion that we ought not put men and women of our military in harm's way unless Congress actually authorizes war, declares war. That's what the Constitution says. And we've been trying to pass, to consider at least passing, a description of what the authorization is for troops in Syria. And while we may talk about it, I think there's too many in Congress that don't want to have to cast a vote, I mean, it's not an easy vote, cast a vote one way or another and let our constituents know whether we're for or against something. So the point to answer that is often, we'll just let the administration do it, and we can criticize President Obama or praise President Trump. We ought to have a standard of behavior of what's right and what's wrong, regardless of who occupies the executive seat. Any final trade? Yes, ma'am?
No.
All right. We ready to move on? Trade? Just one minute.
I think the expansion of acreage overseas on grain, it looks like it's in Russia, Canada, grain. We can't expect after we give the super-trade yield that is anticipated, that may not ever happen. Those markets may never be open again, because those acreages are expanding. And we're, our corporations are taking our technology over to help them increase their yields. So I don't understand how Republicans can be excited about trade. And also, when you see the steel loan prices going up like they are right now, why aren't you going to be facing significant price increases on our equipment, plus the bad grain prices? So this is a double whammy, taking a small town on agriculture. And it's all being sponsored by Republicans, the House, and the administration, the Republicans stand up to some of this bad stuff that's going on.
Roy, before you got here, I tried to explain, at least what I was doing, to quote "stand up." But I also.
Sorry, I didn't find out about it until twenty minutes ago.
We're glad you're here. And you are very knowledgeable about agriculture and trade and manufacturing.
I was in Washington, two weeks ago. I was in Pakistan for a day and a half.
But you, and I've made this point myself and failed to do it today, which is, we're also, AFP may have made this more clear, where they talk about increasing prices that come with tariffs, but in agriculture, we are the target for retaliation, the easiest place for China to create problems. And secondly, the point that Roy made is a solid one as well, what farmers buy, the inputs, those prices go up as well, at a time in which the margins don't exist in agriculture, the weather's not our friend. And the only point I would never disagree with you in any kind of political way, other than to say, I think there are Republicans who are working hard to reverse the direction that the President and his administration is headed on trade tariffs, and I consider myself one of them. It is not a, this is, and let me say this in one more way to maybe bring it home. I see this as, the twelve billion dollars I mentioned doesn't solve the problem. I mentioned the point that we now have Argentina and Brazil, how do we get the markets back? Can we ever get back to vote normal? The other aspect of this is, for those of you who know me as your representative and now your senator, who know me, you know, like, who I am and where I come from, what motivates me, a significant part of what I'm about is trying to keep rural America alive and well. How do we keep my hometown of Plainfield around for a while longer? And you judge that by, do we get kids back? And the only likelihood that there's going to be prosperity and revival of rural America is the success of agriculture. It's not the only thing, but if our farmers and ranchers are failing, the ability to keep a community alive disappears. And this, in my view, what's taking place with trade and lack of trade agreements and tariffs is generational. Because as young men and women are making a decision about whether to return to the farm, whether to stay on the farm, they're making those decisions now based upon what the circumstances are: low commodity prices, low income, bad weather, and now huge uncertainty about whether you can borrow money when you go to the bank, when soybean prices are two dollars less than they were, grain sort of the same way. And so does Kansas is the largest grain sort of producing state in the nation. So this is, while there is an immediate consequence to tariffs and to trade wars and lack of trade agreements, there's a longer-term problem about whether or not there's going to be anybody out there farming Kansas farms, as families make a decision about whether their son or daughter, whether they can afford to have them to come home. And unfortunately, where we are today, I would guess, in many circumstances, and a lot of folks would like to see more family-sized farming operations, there's lots of things that work against that, but lack of profitability is one of them. And the ability to get a son or daughter back to a farm is going to be determined now for many farm families, while we wait to see. It is, Roy, I didn't say this real directly, I guess, but many farmers today, a common conversation I have with farmers today is, Jerry, the President is a businessman, he knows how to negotiate. You are playing, in fact, I had a farmer tell me, you are playing checkers while the President is playing chess. So maybe I don't understand this, maybe I don't have this right, but I would feel like I failed in my obligation to Kansans who I represent and rural America that I love, if I'm not a strong voice for what I see as going wrong, not right. And if I'm wrong, that's a, I'm happy that it all worked out, that this was a negotiating tactic that came to a good cause. But twelve billion dollars would not solve our problems, it's a short-term lack of enough. And we are facing problems today, and we will face problems tomorrow. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry, I forgot where it's going.
I'm a teacher, and so I'd like to transition to couple of education questions.
Please.
First of all, I just want to say, I watch C-SPAN a lot, and so I want to compliment you for the questioning that you did of the Michigan State doctor's sexual abuse hearing.
All right, then, thank you. This is a topic that gets very little attention in Kansas.
Yeah, well, I heard, I listen to everything.
I'm sorry.
I need to get you through it, so I'm really into detail. And so I stayed on until the very end, and they had some of the girls that were interviewed, and they said they were really impressed with the questions they were asked, and they felt the committee was way more prepared than they expected them to be, and so I want to compliment you for that.
Before you move on, usually when I get a compliment, it's followed by the word "but". All right, hold the "but". What's being talked about here is the Olympics and the sexual abuse of athletes. And I chair a subcommittee in the Congress Committee that is responsible for the Olympics and amateur sports. And Senator Wobenball, a Democrat senator from Connecticut, and I, he's the ranking Democrat on the committee. In my view, we have worked well together to try to get some, first of all, to shine light on a problem. The athletes didn't believe that anybody was paying attention to them, because they reported this. One of the athletes' comments was, why was there more than one victim? And it's a darn good question. I don't know people, man, I know Kansans, and my view is, I don't think I know people who, if they were told that by somebody that they've been sexually abused, they wouldn't have done something. And there's something that went on here that apparently people looked the other way. And we want to highlight that, and then we want to find out, we want to demonstrate where that went wrong with the Olympics and the national governing bodies for the sports, and particularly Michigan State, who had hired a doctor that has now been imprisoned. And so that was the second part, and now we're, so we let the victims, what we call survivors, tell their story. We've asked for the bad behavior to come to Congress and testify. The last hearing was to bring in the new people who had replaced the folks who were there when the behavior occurred. And now we'll have another hearing in which other NGVs, because unfortunately, this is not just a gymnastics issue, other sports within our Olympics have similar problems with sex abuse, but also bullying and other issues. And then finally, the issue that I'm still trying to get an understanding of, this was reported to the FBI, and what happened after that report occurred. And so far, I've only had a classified briefing from the Department of Justice about that, but that's the kind of the component. Then we're going to try to tie this together and make recommendations to the Senate and House as to what we ought to do.
I was really proud to say who my senator when I watched that.
Thank you.
My question, though, that I wanted to bring up is, I watched you also in, I think, that in your technology committee, where you were talking about Facebook and some of their problems with data collection and data mining, and I don't know if you're familiar, I called your office, but I want to take some, can you even tell your person, if you're familiar with something called the summer learning platform, which is kind of designed by, by Mark Zuckerberg, he's white, and it's run by Facebook? Well, schools in Kansas right now are lacking on to that idea, and I'm not comfortable, as a teacher, with the possibility of data mining. I know we have a law in Kansas that you can't take information of a student and sell it, but who knows what they do? I mean, they can only have their word, and using that's not worth very much. And so right now, I'm in a school that's testing that, but the plan is for that to be in every school in Kansas. And as our senator, I wanted to make you aware.
I was not, and I appreciate you calling my staff, I'll make sure that I know what you told them, and if.
It's called summer learning, and if you try to Google even a little bit about it, I mean, I do feel they control, and the shadow banning of Congress people is shocking to me. But I feel like you can't even find out that much about it, but even what's out there is negative. And parents, what they found out was, parents were logging in, they're going to have all the data on a student, their grades, you know, everything. And they got that to sell, and as we know, we're a commodity when Facebook is involved.
Information is a commodity today, and that's how Facebook or.
But it's looking like the trend that I see in Kansas is for that to be statewide, and it's free. So yeah, we're looking at it real strongly. But I'm in a school that's testing it, and we've had parents be upset about it, and it's.
Okay. Is this a state-wide education, is it a state-wide education decision, or a school, district-by-school decision, or both?
It's starting at the state level and coming down. I don't see it at this point being mandated, but it's like catching on, like, this is really neat, this is what it gives me, let's do it, it's free. So that's what I see happening, and I'm shocked and worried about.
Thank you for worrying about your students, and thank you for being a teacher.
What's a new crop?
What's a new crop?
Medical marijuana. What is the rope stuff?
There is, the park building includes a provision that allows the growing of hemp, hemp, which is a rope stuff, or, I'm not yet on the marijuana side yet, grapes. There's a lot of wine for minis going on in Kansas. I, Roy and others can answer this question better, but even in finding ditch marvins, and I was, there was an interesting article about a farmer in St. Francis who is growing organic crops and transporting them to Denver, where they are paying a preview. It is one of the things that you see, particularly in Western Kansas, where life is so difficult in a farm, people find ways, innovation, new ideas, to find a new crop or a new way of growing a crop or a new way of marketing a crop. I'm trying to pay more attention to specialty crops, and to, I'm told by the potato grower, now maybe they're just misleading me, Steve, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but we grow potatoes in Kansas. And I was told it's in Ness County, but I've never, no Ness Countyans, I'll be there tomorrow.
What is this, cage-free chicken?
Uh-huh.
Well, granted, chickens are cage-free around.
We raised chickens when I was a kid, too, it's my least favorite meat. I can tell you.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Trigg, and I've had a chance to meet you a couple times. And I was with Resol, I was with Resol, three weeks ago, we're in your staff at DC.
I'm sorry I missed you, I saw some of you in the hallway, but I never got to.
We just want to say thank you, I'd like to say thank you for everybody that. And we just want to say thank you, I'd like to say thank you for everybody that got to go, just some amazing young people from Kansas that would, you know, that's there. And they're very passionate, we're very passionate, obviously, about protecting SNAP and, you know, what you're up against, especially with the House bill, what you're proposing. You know, Senator Roberts has been such a champ, champion for SNAP and making sure of the Farm Bill and such. So what are your concerns, or what would you like to see in that direction, so we're not cutting too many people, if that truly is the case, and regarding work programs and program requirements?
As you would know, I voted on this issue already, but the issue that's, the challenge we face, in fact, I just did a radio interview with Cape Up a while ago about Farm Bill, and I was trying to figure out whether I was pessimist or optimist about Farm Bill being completed anytime soon. And the issue, the difficult issue, is work requirements on what we generally used to call food stamps, but now called SNAP. And that is a provision that will not pass the Senate, where you are required to pass it with 60 votes. And so, if you want the Farm Bill, there's going to have to be some, some bit of give and take on this topic. The House, I can only see some very modest changes that would allow 60 senators to pass a Farm Bill. So the Farm Bill now has gone to Congress, in fact, I made the motion on the Senate floor last week, and Senator Roberts, I don't remember who the chair, but Senator Roberts represents Conway, one of those will chair a Congress committee, and they will have this issue, trying to figure out how Conway can get votes in the House to pass a Farm Bill, how Senator Roberts can get votes to pass a bill to the Senate. This will be the most contentious, difficult issue.
Maybe how more would be harder to play, especially, you know, is it 24 work required? Is there certain states that are not having the work requirement? Because that's what I heard a lot when I was there, that other states currently not having the intended work requirement compared to actually have the other states.
I don't know that, but I'll find that out. I don't know whether this is a state-by-state issue or a national standard, or some states are doing something that is offensive, really hard-looking the other way, that this needs some attention.
Yeah, we already know work required, because I was experienced--
Okay, thanks for telling me that, thanks for resulting. Clark, just a minute. Clark?
Senator, what do you think Judge Kavanaugh's prospects are in the Senate, and will there be a vote before the November election?
My, I have not yet met with Kavanaugh yet, there was, we attempted to do that before I came home this week, I'm anxious to do that. And my analysis is that Kavanaugh will be confirmed. My guess is that there'll be a very small number of Democrats who vote before him, and I would not be surprised if a Republican voted for his confirmation. And the question about timing, I would expect that to occur before the November election.
I wanted to thank you for your fast report on infrastructure. I wanted to find out what your point of view is on the Trump administration, you had an infrastructure plan rolled out earlier in here, I want to know what your thoughts were on, if there's any action being placed, Congress on that, and then also, say, what I've been hyping for, if there's any action on that.
Do, I don't want to take sides between pavement and asphalt, you're right. There are two sides, aren't there? Just trying to demonstrate I know my audience. Thanks for the time to leave this. It's very disappointing, I think this was a mistake of Congress, the administration, when President Trump's administration came first into existence. We should have dealt with non-Importal Care Act first, we should have dealt with infrastructure, because there would have been a broad opportunity for some cooperation, Republicans, Democrats, working together, and something the country desperately needs. I would, I would tell Kansans that what we do to invest in infrastructure, and often we think of that as roads and bridges, and it's more than that, but transportation for us in Kansas, and talking about trade, again, the markets are outside the United States for much of what we produce, and therefore, how efficiently we can get those commodities or manufactured goods to market is going to be a determining factor whether we can compete in a global economy. And when you're in the middle of the United States, it creates an added potential cost if you don't have an efficient transportation system. So we needed to have done this. The administration's infrastructure plan never provided the dollars to pay for any, I'm speaking in general terms, almost provided no dollars to pay for increased investment in infrastructure, and so it's just language. I now serve on, I think, every committee possible that would deal with the issue of an infrastructure plan. I've instructed my staff to begin the process of, what would I champion? Going into a new Congress in regard to investment in infrastructure, but I would not see, unfortunately, any passage of a significant transportation plan. The issue is, let me phrase this for my constituents, and I know AFP's position on this topic, but the question is, how do you pay for this? And if you ask Kansans in a room like this, how many of you would be willing to raise gas taxes to put more money into? And the answer is almost no answer whatsoever. It's the Chamber of Commerce, the economic development folks, and a highway contractor. And you've got to work your way through this, and you can bring folks along if they actually believe the money is going to be spent on that aspect. And they see government using money in ways that were unintended, and we also know how they're vocal, particularly in Kansas, where we drive long distances, the gas taxes is an onerous thing. So there is no politically eased solution, but you're not going to have investment in infrastructure unless you figure out a way to pay for it. And so, we talked about it, but there will be no result, and I need to figure out what it is that I can do to champion a plan. I promised the folks here at the Conference Center that we would conclude about 2:30 because there's a funeral going on in the bigger chapel for a Solydian businessman, and parking, and people are such that we ought to depart, or we get in the way of a funeral. Yeah, Tim?
One final thing, aviation security, I can touch on, and thank you in front of the group for your intervention several times for the benefit of aviation security. 2015, Senator Moran actively advocated for the return of the Transportation Security Administration to Solydian, and then the Air Terminal, that enabled Great Lakes to start then flights back then, and new era then in air service. And then, just most recently, a pretty bonehead idea was floated out of the Department of Homeland Security to remove TSA from about 150 airports. Just want to thank you for, again, intervening actively and engaging, you know, the TSA administrator, saying, "That's not a good idea. We worked too hard to get TSA back into communities like the size of Solydian." And now we've had success, we've had a chip service to Denver and Chicago, and that's to your credit, your efforts. Thank you very much for making sure aviation security is a priority.
Tim, of course, exaggerates my time, but he doesn't, so he can make it commercial.
We know each other very too well by this time, and so--
Tim, you're welcome for, I'm grateful for what you had to say. We're delighted with the efforts that this community puts in in providing transportation.
Well, the group doesn't understand, doesn't fully understand, appreciate, it was your efforts to get the TSA back. We wouldn't have opportunities we've had here the last four years without your active participation, so that, I very much appreciate that, and the group needs to know that.
What Tim is talking about is TSA deciding that you could board the way in Solydian and get off in Denver and go through TSA there, and that made no sense. Somewhat like the Southwest Chief and the folks at Amtrak who say, "You can replace a train at Dodge City, and you'll get on a bus and go to Halliburton." It will not work, people will not fly, people will not get on a train, but it's a government solution to something. I'm grateful for the chance we had to have a conversation.